Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Call this meeting to order. It is... Well, I lost the time. 5:37, August 17th. Priscilla, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still unmuted? Yep, okay. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Sounds like a no. Review and approve Board minutes for August 3rd and August 10th.
So...
I have a question on the minutes, George. So, you can mute again.
Go ahead, Mr. Terry.
On the August 3rd minutes...
Hang on, you're muted.
On the August 3rd minutes, under Page 1, Letter B, Principles Reopening Schools, Ms. Mikowski was discussing about music will be approached as a theory with rhythm exercises. Middle school athletes will not be taking place. Athletics will not be taking place. We're looking to hold intramurals for students. I remember, I don't see it anywhere on here, maybe I'm wrong. And, you know, I just, I remember asking why there was no sports, even though the VPA at that time did not cancel. And I know there was some dialogue after that. I was just, didn't know why that wasn't on here unless, again, unless I'm wrong. Is any, I don't see anybody else, anybody else see that?
This is the August 3rd minute?
Yeah. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is the, I've heard a lot of feedback today, specifically concerning community values and concerns and interests. And maybe a lot of people were caught by surprise that the, there is no middle school athletics, so. And I know we spoke about it, so I just think that that should be added in there. I've never had that happen where they go back and add something. I don't know the protocol for that.
I think as long as we're all in agreement that that was the case, then we could make that change.
So, any original minutes? What is stated by Mr. Mikowski is correct. She discussed music and athletics. Music will be approached as theory with rhythm exercises. Middle school athletics will not be taking place. So, that was stated, but then as I was looking through the handout, I asked why there was no sports happening, even though the VPA at that time did not cancel. And then there was some discussion after that. I just don't see that in the minutes, so.
Can I, can I interject? There was some discussion, you are correct, and I believe the discussion ended.
Yeah, right.
Hang on, we gotta pause and then let somebody talk and then mute.
Sorry.
Okay.
If I can't, you're right.
So, what were you saying?
Ms. Mikowski, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. You're right, there was some discussion after that statement was made, Jason. And I believe it was left at where you asked me to reconsider.
Chris, we're gonna... Chris, we're gonna need a little help with some mute buttons here. We're having technical difficulties.
I don't, Priscilla should be able to talk. I don't have, my side, it says that she's unmuted, so.
Okay. You have something, Priscilla, to add to that?
Am I, am I muted or unmuted?
You're unmuted.
I can't find me at all in here. Yes, Ms. Mikowski said she had canceled them. So, that was part of the discussion.
That's what I remember as well.
All right, so go ahead and mute again. Bear with us here, folks, we're working at it. So, it sounds like there was some discussion. If we're okay with just approving the Board minutes with that, those discussion points added, does that sound like it makes sense? Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm okay to go ahead with the minute as presented. However, I would like to stress the fact that Mr. Terry's comments need to be added in our next agenda so that we can actually move on those items as far as present and activities.
George.
Go ahead, Jason, Terry.
So, I think, you know, not to hold the progress up. I, I know there was a discussion, we can always go back and look at the tape. I just, you know, like I said, I've been hearing a lot of feedback today, and I think some of the parents are just finding out, unfortunately. And I think it's important that, you know, I, as I look through, and I don't want, as I look through some of other topics on this last, you know, August 3rd meeting, I think there was a lot of things that probably weren't captured fully. But, you know, we can always, we have the tape, and I assume that those are on file forever, so we can always go back to that. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
So, how do we want to proceed here with this? Can we approve them with the, with the corrections noted? I guess... Yeah, I mean, I'd be okay with that if somebody wanted to make a motion to do that. If at any point I'm wrong, if at any point I'm wrong, somebody please speak up.
It's fine, still moved.
Okay. Four minutes approved. Sorry, you have to vote? All in favor? Just a, just a raise of, raise of the hand, Jason Terry.
I have seen.
Priscilla? Priscilla says yes. Mr. Benson says yes. And I will say yes, so we can move on. Three yeses, minutes are approved. Communication and public comment. Chris, anybody in the chat box?
No, not yet.
Okay. Policies, do we have any new policies? I don't think so.
No, we do not.
Okay. Reports, Superintendent, Central Office Staff, District Updates. Go ahead, Chris.
All right, so I got a few updates in regards to this past week since the last time we met. First thing I want to welcome and introduce Flora Pagan, our new business administrator manager. She's joining us tonight, so I don't know if you guys want to go around and do a quick round of introductions who you are. That'd be helpful.
Sure, I'll go first. George Smith, parent of kids in our schools. Lived here my whole life. Currently, the Chair of this Board. Welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Lambert. I taught in, at three of the schools within the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor District at one time or another. I taught 47 years. Have been retired for three years. This is my second year on the Board. I'm also on the High School Board and the WNSU Board. And I had three children that went to school in this school district.
We can't hear Jason from this side.
I'm here for them, as well as all my friends' kids, good kids, kids at this point. First year on the Board, then in there, and there's the ones who are fine. Thank you for showing.
Thank you.
There.
Hi, Flora, welcome aboard. I was a part of the committee that interviewed you, and I think that you're gonna do a great job here, and I can't wait till you get, get rolling, and I think you're gonna do really great things here. Thank you.
Thank you. I found my first check. Opening mail.
Chris, anything more?
I, I got some updated information that we can, I can go through with everybody. So, it was the end of last week, and since the last meeting, I want to talk a little bit about the, the numbers that we have for remote learning. The Board's okay with that?
Right on.
Okay, so, right now, so, after we had all the registrations in, and I appreciate all the families who went right in and registered, we were able to, all in all, we have 198 students who are doing the virtual, Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative. Out of those 198, you have 36 for the high school, and 162 are K through 8. That means, so we have, out of Central Elementary School, we have 30 students out of 156 who are gonna be taking part in the Virtual Learning Collaborative. At Bill's Falls Middle School, we have 43 students out of 250. And Saxton's River, we have 10 students that will be participating in the Vermont Virtual Learning. So, that's where we currently are. And now that, we have a total of seven teachers we'll be using for this Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative. And these teachers will have training, I believe they'll start tomorrow, and receive online teacher certificate for, for teaching online classes. And the training will be provided through the Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative. So, they'll have the, they do get that training and a certificate that certifies them to do online teaching, which is great. Some of the other information, moving on from the, the remote. I'll, I'll take out questions afterwards, I just want to go through the, through the data. So, also, in regards to some of the, the teachers that are coming back right now, we have 91.2% of the teachers will be returning, fully intend to return to in-person instruction at the beginning of the school year. We had a few teachers that they're unable to return in personal instruction for medical reasons. We tried to tap into those teachers first in regards to still teaching with us, only maybe through the Virtual Learning Collaborative, so we're able to meet their needs. And then there were some teachers that matter with the situation, weren't returning, and I believe those were the retirements that we saw. We have some changes to the reopening date. As you remember, we, we initially were going to start the school year with a half-day on Monday, half-day Tuesday, no remote learning on Wednesday, half-day Thursday, and half-day Friday. And it was gonna alternate between the groups. So, we switched that up a little bit. And so, for the first week of school, because Monday's a holiday, and so Tuesday, all the days will still remain half-day. We went through that with a leadership team in regards to, it's gonna help teachers and all of us just acclimate to the new structure. So, what it looks like now is Group A will meet on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then Group B will meet on Thursday and Friday, and that will be all half-days. And then the second week remained the same, where it would be a full day for Monday, Tuesday for Group A, and then Thursday, Friday for Group B, and then Wednesday, we go to our normal routine of having that remote learning for all students. We, we switched it this way, the leadership team switched it up this way because we felt, we wanted to make sure all students got the two days in that they, they had. And so, we just switched out the Wednesday and added a, the second group for Group A. So, those are the changes that we made to the first week of schedule since our last meeting. That's it, I'm sure there'll be more questions that the Board might have around some other stuff, but I can open up for questions now based on the information I just shared.
Chris, could you repeat the numbers again for kids in school? And there was one missing, the, the total number of kids for Saxton's River. I didn't hear that. One, one of us didn't, was having problems, couldn't hear very well.
Okay, Laura, do you have the, the total number of students at Saxton's River?
I do, so are you looking for the VTBLC number? I have 11, Chris, for that.
Yeah, you know, just, just the total of...
We're expecting 69 in person.
How, how many?
We're expecting 69 in person at this point, although I've had emails about potential move-ins, but we don't have the registration paperwork in hand. So, expecting 69 and then 11 for VTBLC.
So, we have a total of 81? Do ADM?
Yes.
Right, so I'll go through those numbers again. You have Central Elementary School is 30 students out of 156 for remote learning. You have the middle school, 43 students out of 250. And you have Saxton's River, 11 students out of 81.
I'm just gonna repeat that out loud. Everybody's got their systems turned down, so we don't get feedback. So, I'm just gonna repeat that out loud for everybody in this room. Central Elementary, 30 of 156 will be doing virtual learning. Middle School, 43 of 250. And Saxton's River, 11 of 81. Does that sound right?
That is correct.
Okay. Chris, what was the, what was the 198, wasn't that?
198 is the total, including SUY. 198 students will be doing Vermont Virtual Learning, and 36 of those 198 are high school, and 162 are K through 8.
Gotcha.
I, I think we have an updated number at the middle school, and it's closer to 56 at the middle school.
Any other questions for Mr. Pratt? I see none. Oh, we got one, hang on a minute. Priscilla, go ahead.
Okay, so, part of our instructions last time were to progress to moving for in-person, so I'm assuming, because it's only been a week, there hasn't been any chance to even look at, you know, when and how the in-person, once you're starting to move to that, would look. But I'm hoping that, that you are thinking about that and whether these numbers, how much these numbers impact that. Do you have any idea how much the numbers would impact it?
No, that, I mean, it's definitely something we've already considered. We're gonna look at, just see what that looks like for...
Hang on, Chris, hang on a second. So, if you hit mute, I'll turn it back up, so you can hear. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's one thing we've already started looking at. Seeing, you know, we just, you know, finished getting these numbers very recently. The next thing would, to be looked at, what does that look like? And I've already started, you know, thinking about, at the very least, what does that look like for K4? Does that free up enough that we could possibly, at some point, have K4 in all the schools for in-person instruction? So, yeah, we've already started, you know, thinking about that, but we want a little longer to look at the actual numbers and see what it looks like once the kids are in the school.
Priscilla says thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I see no's. So, moving on to Principals, reopening of schools. Who'd like to go first?
I can go, since...
Ms. Mikowski.
Since I'm kind of the outlier. So, first of all, our plan has been distributed to families. It's posted on our website. And in addition to that, Mr. Quadro and myself are working on a hybrid learning handbook, which will be posted on our website as an additional resource for our families. We're monitoring our enrollments, and, you know, trying to make sure we've got somewhat equal cohort and pod sizes, depending on the grade level. Because of the imbalance in our school, we'll have two pods in each cohort at 5th and 6th grade, and three pods in each cohort at 7th and 8th grade. And the pod sizes range right now from about 9 to 12 students. I have established three school-wide committees to facilitate our reopening. Their family orientation, health, safety and facilities, and extracurriculars and after-school activities. The Extracurricular Committee, I know, is meeting tomorrow. Their Chair is Oriana. And if that committee makes the recommendation that we should follow what recently came out from VPA on extracurriculars, I will honor that request. For us, it really is just cross-country. Right now, we are, no matter what, whether, well, if we have extracurriculars at field hockey, and so it was only fall sports that I'm addressing right now. If we have field hockey and soccer, we would have it as, you know, intramurals, et cetera, which, you know, kind of like the VPA talked about, you know, even football being 7-on-7, inner-squad games. But if the committee, after they do their research, feels that we can do it safely, I will abide by that request. On August 24th and 25th, I'm gonna be hosting Town Hall meetings for each grade level. They'll be virtual. I will be discussing the new normal for BFMS, answer questions, discuss an outline of the school day, our health screenings, our safety protocols, moving students throughout the building, stuff like that. And there'll be one per grade level. We meet as a faculty every Thursday, and this week, one of the big items we'll be hearing from the different committees. And starting next week, I will, well, starting this week, actually, I will be meeting with each of my individual five teams to kind of see where they are and how they are ready. Chris, you had mentioned, or Lynn talking about the remote days. Do you want me to go into that, or is that a different conversation?
No, I, I think it's a, it's a good lead-in to, you can talk a little bit about what it looks like for the middle school on remote days.
Sure. The AOE screen guidelines are two hours for middle school students. We're gonna break them down into four 30-minute classes. So, every student will meet with their ELA teacher, their math teacher, their social studies teacher, and their science teacher. Mr. Rumrell is also going to take advantage of Wednesdays to hold his individual band lessons remotely. We'll also have our IEP 504 meetings, et cetera, because those are supposed to be, those will be held virtually per the AOE guidelines. Also, other services that students may be receiving will also be scheduled on Wednesdays remotely. That's my report.
Any questions for Ms. Mikowski? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy, you're up next. Can you hear us, Ms. Kennedy? We'll get back to her. Ms. Hazard, are you ready to go?
I am, hello everyone. And so, similar to what Karen shared, our task force continues to meet and fine-tune our reopening plan, which is also posted on our website and was put on Facebook, too. We plan to send an updated plan just as we fine-tune, fine-tune the plan. Hopefully, by the end of this week, we meet again tomorrow. But I'd like to get that out to families as soon as possible, so that they have time to plan on their end as well. Let's see, we're also going to have virtual meetings by class prior to the start of the school year. And we're going to discuss tomorrow after our administrative meeting today. Tomorrow, at our task force, we'll be talking about in-person individual orientation for kindergarten families. So, thinking about, you know, brief time slots for those families who have never been in our building, perhaps might have the opportunity to, to see the school. So, that's something we'll be talking about, just to create some sort of welcoming environment as much as possible prior to the start of the school year. We will be having, our plan is to have daily morning meetings for attendance purposes, which means they will be live morning meetings, and students will either be in person and also be attending virtually. So, that, that's our plan for taking attendance. And obviously, we will meet parents' needs as much as possible if there's conflict with that on their end, because we certainly want to be accommodating. But also, daily morning meetings is a great way to build community and keep the class together. Wednesdays, we'll start with a morning meeting, and it'll be a science, social studies focus. We'll also do our online library class for all, for all grade levels at that time. And then the remainder of the day for teachers will be meetings and planning, but primarily meetings.
So, lots going on. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hazard? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kennedy, are you operational over there? We're still getting, getting nothing over here.
I, I noticed that she's not muted, so...
I think she's trying.
Yep.
Well, in the meantime, Chris, I have a question that I didn't get to when it, when you were speaking. Is the IEP schedule looking the same as the kids that are not on IEP?
I'm gonna have a... I'm going to have Mr. Haas, the Director of Student Services, talk to you a little bit about that, because they've done a lot of work on that, a lot of planning with trying to look at the IEPs and virtual learning and stuff. So I will hand that over to Mr. Haas.
Thank you, Chris. So, yeah, we've been really talking with the Vermont Learning Collaborative. So we've got just under 40 kids whose parents are opting for the online. And they range, you know, in all levels of disabilities. And when we talked with the, the folks at the collaborative, we can kind of cherry pick different classes so we can really structure that online learning for kids based on their ability level. So basically, if a kid's in seventh grade but they're a few years behind, we can structure the courses so that they're actually at their, at their ability level as opposed to having them stick in with a seventh grader. We've also identified two special educators who will be fully supporting those students online. And one of them is Amanda Mayo, who used to work for the Vermont Collaborative and so has a real intimate knowledge of how they work. So we're really excited about that. And then we begun meeting with some parents to talk, to look at, review its services. We're working on guidelines for our case managers because we're going to have to review and revise each IEP for students who are both online 100%, but also those who are hybrid. Because obviously, services are going to look different because the environments are different. And so we'll have to have those individual discussions with families and teams to decide what those are. And just as Ms. Bukowski was saying, we have to look at what the guidelines are. So like, let's take a middle school student, just because she mentioned that. If a middle school student is, are on Wednesday going to spend two hours online, and if they get occupational therapy support, and then they also maybe get speech support, and perhaps they also get a mental health support, when it was typically 30 minutes, are we going to continue to do that 30 minutes? Are we going to blend that? So how do we make sure we get quality services to kids, but at the same time, not overburden them so they're online all day long? It's one of the features we found out in the spring and really trying to balance that out. So that, that's kind of our movement forward. One of the other things we've looked at doing is, especially with our speech folks, we've spread them out. So we have a speech person in each building that will be servicing the kids in that building so that we're not having to constantly be moving them around buildings and, you know, going in and out of buildings. We can't do the same with occupational therapy. So we're going to have to really work on a schedule so that the provider is not going into multiple buildings, you know, within the same day. And then what we've also worked out is our evaluations for speech and for our academic and psychological evaluations, they will take place at the SU in, you know, what we're dubbing clean evaluation rooms. So we'll be bringing the students, we're working with families, and figuring out ways to bring the students to the SU. And then that way, evaluators, again, aren't going into multiple buildings and potentially become, you know, super-spreaders. So that, that's our, our big concern. So, you know, we, we've been able to balance out the paraprofessionals. We did have to, you know, activate the recall list. Unfortunately, quite a few folks, about half a dozen, had already gotten new positions. So we've had to do a posting. And that, part of that is to try and help fulfill the health monitor screeners and whatnot. So we're working on that, getting those folks back. But we, we feel we're in a real good shape to open up.
Andy, question for you. When will the parents or families of kids on IEPs know, know what their schedule will look like? Or what their, you know, their plan, their individualized plan will look like? Any idea when that, they're, they would know that?
Well, so, a student's schedule is going to look like whatever the building tells it to be. Because we are just a service on top of what the student gets. And so as far as how services will look, we will be meeting with families. We can't, I can't have case managers meeting with families right now because they are contractually not allowed to come into the building. And so therefore, I would have to be paying them to be meeting with them. So if, you know, I know I'd heard a rumor out there about August 25th and the WNEA asking to come back sooner. That hasn't been approved yet. If that comes back sooner, we'll begin those, having those meetings. Like I said, we've had a couple of meetings already with families. Sometimes we can just do it over the phone. So some case managers are already reaching out to families. But, you know, it's, it's going to take a few weeks. It's, we're talking about almost 300 IEP meetings. So we, it's going to take some time to, to meet with those families. We're going to have to tweak once we get back in the building. You know, we have a great idea, but the hybrid is something new to us. So we will have to, to work on that. The other thing that's holding us up a little bit from like, why we can't do it today, is the AOE has, has put out some guidance that they want changed in the IEP format. And so the company that we work with is continuing to work with the AOE on what that formatting is going to look like. And with everything else, it's caught up in legal right now. And so it was supposed to be out on Friday. And so we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern on that. But I have a letter ready to go to send out to parents, both those that are going to be hybrid and also those that are going to be remote, basically saying what I'm saying right now is that in the, in the next week or so, your, your child's case manager is going to be contacting you to set up meetings.
Any other questions for Mr. Haas? Ms. Kennedy, Kennedy, are you operational? Ah, no. So, so can, can we assume that your report would be similar to the other principals? Yeah, we can't hear you.
George, what I can say, this is Laura, is that Carrie and I have talked a lot and tried to make, you know, what's happening in the buildings as similar as possible just because we're under the same umbrella. And as well, we've been meeting with the other elementary principals throughout the SU. So, so we have been in pretty constant communication. And it's great to have her on board and bounce ideas off of. So thanks, Carrie.
Excellent report, Carrie. Thank you. Let's see, moving on. Any other questions for any principals? Are we good? We're good. Business office, financial report?
Yeah, see, I had it sent out again. I know after our conversation, George, that the, and Teresa and Flora can elaborate on this. But it's the same financials that you guys had the last meeting. But it doesn't mean that you don't have questions about it. So I would say if the board has any questions, Teresa and Flora are available to answer those questions based on the financial reports that you guys got the last time.
Mr. Terry had his hand up. Go ahead, Jason.
Hi, Flora. I need to mute.
Hi.
Hang on, we got something wrong in this room. Let me turn it down.
Maybe it's me, I'm wrong.
You can turn up your volume now if you want.
Flora, when we did the interview, I remember we discussed quite a bit with the other people. And I know this board and all the other boards are really anxious for you to get going. And I know it's going to be very difficult to kind of learn on the fly and also try to produce. So thank you for taking on the responsibility. So just, my only question would be just going forward. Me personally, and I think I can echo the sentiment for other board members. When the numbers are on the page, we'd like to know a little bit of the why behind them. Like, if there's a number for salaries, for example, like, who, who, who are the people that dictate those salaries or supplies that were bought? Like, what exactly? You know, so you can drill it down, like, you know, what supplies were bought or whatever? Because it's going to be a very challenging year. And I anticipate us spending more money on labor with, you know, all that temperature check people that we're going to need. And if we can save a dollar, you know, even a dollar in other areas, that would be beneficial. So I would, you know, me personally, and I think I can echo the sentiment of all the board members across the area that, you know, knowing the why and drilling it down would be super beneficial. So that, that is my only ques, sign of question, it's a comment. So thank you.
Anybody? Yeah, so Priscilla just made a comment. And I think it kind of goes in line with the conversation I had with, with Chris at some point here in regards to how... So I think at one time, we said, our first board meeting of the month, it was just kind of going to be a verbal. This is kind of how it looks so far. And then the third one, the second board meeting of the month would be where a more detailed report would, would come to us. There's other ideas and how we could, you know, change our times and whatnot. But is it realistic to assume that we would get reports, that, that, that second meeting of the month report for the previous month in time enough to, you know, go over it at that time? I guess that's kind of the question.
Okay, I did review the report with Teresa because she had mentioned that the report was actually the same as last month. But, so it's actually the fact of having to update the report like constantly, which is a little challenging. So it will be better if we just present the report like in one of the meetings, either, or either the first one that you guys have or the second one. Most likely, I felt that it was better maybe in the second one. It'll have more information, more into details, and it will actually bring you in any of your expenses throughout what has started up the month already. I don't know if that works for you or not. If not, if it is better for you guys two times a month, we could do it. But ideally, it will be maybe on your second meeting. That way, it just captures more information and it gives her as well some time to put everything that she needs to put in. Like I said, right now, they will work in, I guess, in payroll and different things, which is not an excuse. But it's just in the fact of me getting adjusted as well as everything that is, needs to be done. You know, maybe once I'm in place, you know, in October, maybe it'll be rolling easily. And maybe then, if you wanted 10 times a month, I could do it. But in the meantime, if you guys give us at least a little bit of time and we could present that at least in your second meeting, it will help a lot.
Thank you, Flora. So, so asking other board members, are we okay with maybe just getting a verbal update on our first meeting and, and getting the actual report on our second meeting of the month? Preferably before the weekend, so there's time to review it? Is that...
Yes, so we will present the report three days before the meeting. That way, you guys will have time to review it. Because it's not acceptable if I give it to you an hour before. You know, you guys wouldn't have time to meet and, and review any discrepancies that you find, especially if you have a detailed report, you know, which is asking, you know, supply spent. You know, if you guys want, want to go over it. Right now, with, I know it's going to be a lot of expenses when it comes to PPEs, for example. You know, like, why one school needs more PPEs than the other one if maybe has like less students? So I do know that all of that information is going to be needed and into details. But if we're working on it constantly, we should be able to come at the beginning of the month and present some information and give it to you on time. So on the second meeting, you guys could actually come back to us with any questions.
Does that sound acceptable to everybody here? Sounds...
Yeah, that's fine for me. I just... Sorry, that's fine with me. I just, like I said, like, the frustrating part is when we ask a question and then it's like, oh, I'll get back to you. And then it's like a whole nother month of waiting. By then, it's like the whole world has changed in a month. So that question's not important anymore. So, yeah, that, it's, for me, I just would like the details, I guess.
That's understandable.
Yeah, and for the board, you know, that's, you know, Flora and I have already discussed that, is that making sure that the board gets the financials with enough leeway that you have time to go through it. And that's why we're, we're thinking, you know, three days in advance. You know, we have the boots on the ground now. And that's one of the first things that we really want to address to make sure that the boards have the information they need to make the decisions they need. Especially, like Jason said, we're going to be up against a tough year in regards to budgeting. We just want to make sure that now that we're in a position, we can provide the boards with the information they need to, to make, you know, the decisions that need to be made.
I think everybody over here is good with that. Sounds good. So if there's no more questions or comments, we can move on. Very good. Thank you, Flora.
Thank you.
Where are we? SU board? I don't know if there's anything to report from there, or maybe there is, and I'm...
George, Mr. Clark is joining us. He might want to chime in if there's any SU boards.
Chris, I can do that. And the update is very simple. We will be meeting again this coming Wednesday night. Once again, as always, all board members are both invited and encouraged to attend. So I'm very hopeful that not only will all the members from Rockingham who will be able to show up Wednesday night at 6:30 will show up. But I think it would also be very useful, Chris, if we could have notice sent from the WNESU office to members of all boards. Because it appears that as far as Wednesday night meeting goes, the only members who've been noticed on it are the members who are voting members. So let's see, we can't widen that circle a little bit.
Yeah, I sent an email earlier with the, the link for everybody. So everyone should have received it.
Thank you, Chris.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, David. Committees, any committee reports? Chris, any that you're aware of?
No, there, I have no committee reports. I don't know if, quiet on the committee front.
Okay, unfinished business for discussion slash action. Board goals, I don't really want to spend a lot of time here and I'm on this. I'm sure a lot of folks maybe agree. But I would encourage everybody to, and I mean, unless somebody wants to, we can. I encourage everybody to continue to read over those once in a while. Any objections, I will gladly slow down and we can do it. Otherwise... Good? Okay.
George, and the new, and the new business, is it going to be, um, I know the high school board did it at their last meeting. They called it a meeting to vote on whether or not the teachers come back on the 25th or not? Is that something that was discussed at all with other board members?
Not amongst each other, no. I'm sure people are aware, they've seen emails from the SU. So in fact, I... So I, I, in fact, I think that's next on our agenda, so we, we can talk about that. Teacher request to start school on August 25th. Maybe you could, uh, Chris, give us a little lead in into that conversation.
Uh, sure. So the, um, the NEA sent a request, uh, about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks ago, um, asking if, um, because the state changed the first day of school to September 8th, they kind of pushed everything forward a little bit. And so the NEA was asking, the Teachers Association was asking if they could still come back on the 25th, um, to prepare in the buildings, um, to get ready for, um, the year that's ahead of us with the hybrid and the remote learning. Um, it's something that, you know, I support, the administration supports, and we could all use that time. And I thought it was, um, very encouraging that, um, these teachers are asking to, to come back early. And so that's what their, their request is. And, um, Noam Bartlett from the NEA, um, sent, um, a lengthy letter to Stephen Fine, who's, um, on the negotiations committee, the lead for the negotiations committee. And so, um, that's what, one of the things that the SU Board is going to be, um, voting on Wednesday night as well. And so, um, I would, I would ask that, um, this board make the approval to allow the teachers to come back on the 25th. And there's, there's no upfront money there. They're not asking for any additional money. And what we'll do is we'll work out the, uh, professional development days, um, so it still works out to, um, according to their contract. Um, so we're not, they don't have more or less, um, it should, and so we want it to all balance out at the end of the year. And we have the days that we can work with. I met with the, uh, the NEA and, um, last Friday, I believe. And so we worked all the details out. Now it's just a matter of having, um, the boards approve it. Um, so that's, that's where we are in regards to the, uh, request from the NEA. It was, it's just a matter of them wanting to come back early on the 25th, like they were originally going to do before the, uh, student start date was switched to September 8th.
Hang on a second. Go ahead, Priscilla.
Basically what it means, it norm, basically the, the CBA says that they can only work so many days before the start of school, which is why it's a problem. Um, that's so that you don't have them assigned to come back middle of the summer or something. But what they wanted to do is, uh, take five of their additional days that were, um, in-service type days and move those to there so that they could use them in preparation for school. And it doesn't change the calendar any, it just changes where the days are in it. So it's an easy thing to, you know, to go through and just help out so that they're more prepared and feel more comfortable coming back. So I don't think, see it as a problem for us, unless somebody else does. And, and they, the state may adjust the number of days later that we have to, that the children have to be in school, which would mean that then the teachers could use additional days for in-service. They, we can also, as, you know, sometimes they have half-days and those count, and it can put some in-service time in later if they really need it to work with their students. So it can be adjusted pretty easily. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Mr. Terry, you had something? Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Chris, does that include all support staff as well?
No, right now the support staff would still come back on September 1st. It's because they're, they're two different CBAs.
Okay. And then, um, I, I do remember talking about this earlier that I suggested that I thought it'd be a good idea to get teachers back sooner to practice. You know, so we're running out of time, and, um, so I, I support it. And, um, is, will there be any like, uh, like, uh, like a side letter or something as far as like deviation, as far as the collective bargaining? Or, you know, is it gonna be in writing somewhere so that, that it's, uh, you know, what the NEA's plan is?
Yeah, they've provided, they've provided, um, myself and the, and the negotiations team, um, with a side letter. It's pretty formal. That's where we're at, the stage we're at, because initially, you know, we just said, wanted something basic from, Norm, from the NEA, and it got really detailed. So because of the details he put in that, um, that's why we want all the boards to, to vote on it. So, um, there's no miscommunication in regards to, on either party and what we're expecting.
Thank you.
George, I, I don't mean to interrupt you. David Clark here. You have a model motion which is in your inbox. Chris has it, and I just sent it to Jason Terry. It's suggested language which would be uniform across the districts if you choose to use it. I would suggest you use it.
Thanks, David. Did receive your email. Thanks. That's kind of getting, we're, we're getting to that point here in a minute, I think. Uh, any other, uh, comments or questions? Chris, or can you, do you have the, uh, language that you could put up on the screen for folks?
I can see if I can call it up.
I could do it, but I'm having a hard enough time with volume here, so.
Just give me a minute, please.
Yeah. Well, while we're waiting for that, um, I actually forgot and skipped over something. We have some empty, um, duties to fill within this board. I don't know what's the legalities behind going back to, um, to address those. Is that, is it too far gone, or is that something we can talk about as a board?
So I get the language for you up on the screen.
All right, we'll address that afterwards, okay? Uh, okay, so it's up on the screen. Any questions, comments, concerns? I would entertain, uh, that motion. Jason Terry, uh, made the motion. Roll call, show of hands, or, uh, would be fine. Uh, Priscilla, you're up first. Yep. Aye. Uh, Jason Terry.
Aye.
Jason Benson.
Aye.
And I as well. So the ayes have it. There it is. So they can get back to, back to work early. Excellent.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, so maybe I jumped the gun a bit. I thought I skipped something, but maybe, uh, we can deal with that afterwards. Number 10, I guess. Uh, board vac- vacancy, we have an empty seat. Um, as long as nobody is opposed, I'd like to give it one more meeting cycle before we have the discussion on choosing someone. I don't know that we have a lot of applicants at this moment, but anybody watching, if you're interested, um, please, um, express your interest, uh, to me, um, or Mr. Pratt. Um, I, I'm, it may be up on, maybe posted on the SU website. I'm not 100% sure, but, I think as long as everyone is in agreement on that. Yeah. Well, yeah, express your interest in, in also, you know, what, what qualifications or, or why you wanna be on the board or whatever, you know, the normal, what, um, language looks like. So if everybody's okay with that? Somebody saying yes? Excellent. Uh, appointments? So we have a. Hang on. I s- I see, see your hand, Jason. Hang on just a minute. Yep. Uh, we have a few areas that we need to fill in, uh, within this board. I think we have to establish a vice chair. Um, and also, uh, somebody to be on the negotiations committee. Chris, do you know, do you remember, were there any more? Uh, that you recall?
I think the only other one was signing of warrants, and I think you already took care of that.
Okay, so it looks like those two. Jason, go ahead. You had your hand up?
Yeah, I would, I would like to throw my name, uh, my name in for the negotiations committee. I, um, I, I think I would do a really good job with it.
Um, anybody else? Any comments? Any thoughts? Looking around the room, I hear crickets. Is that something that's appointed, or is it a, we vote on it? I can't remember.
I, I would just, uh, vote on it.
A vote? Okay. I don't know. Well, we can go ahead and have a vote. I'm sorry? No, I did not wanna do that. Uh, okay, so all in favor of, uh, Jason Terry being on the negotiations committee? Say aye. Priscilla, raise your hand, or show the public, yep, or don't if you choose. Mr. Benson, go ahead. I give it one of those as well. Good luck to you, sir.
Jason, I will share the, uh, shared Google Drive from negotiations, so you have all the information.
Priscilla, go ahead. You had, just had a comment. Go ahead. I think it was a good, good.
Do we really need to do a vice chair if you just, you just take over? I mean, your vice chair right now, and you're stepping up to the other. So do we really need to do us another vice chair with just four of us? I mean, it's, I mean, if, if you're here leading the meeting, um, you're gonna be here every time. I'm gonna tell you, you have to be. As clerk, I would do, I was the third person down to do that anyway. So we've got one to take that over. And if you and I are both out, then we can't have a meeting anyway, so. So I think if we just leave it alone, personally, that's the way I would go at this point.
Wanna hit mute again? I'm muted. Sounds like Priscilla is the vice chair. No, I'm just kidding. No, no, that, that's fine. We can leave it like that, and there's a, a succession, so I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't plan on going anywhere, but, but we can leave it as that for now, as long as there's a backup in place, so I'm okay with that. Uh, any other appointments? Anybody have any? I think that was, that was it for today. Uh, director's comments? Who'd like to go first today? Mr. Benson.
Well, I still appreciate the opportunity to, uh, I still appreciate the opportunity that we all have here. It's moving forwards and it's certainly troubling time that everybody's going through. We have our state of emergencies moving up and moving out.
I don't think the public can hear, Mr. Benson.
Any better? All right. Yeah, well, I appreciate the opportunity that we've all had as a board, and I look forward to getting past our current emergency situation that everybody is in. And hopefully the state of emergency stopped getting pushed back even further. But that's beyond our control, beyond anybody's control, really. But hopefully in just a few months, everything will be starting to get back to normal for everyone, and school will progress, and students will be learning, and everything will be getting better. That is all.
Thank you, sir. Priscilla, any comments?
It, it was really exciting to hear that there are plans are at least being developed that are in keeping with recommendations by the medical and educational state leaders for moving to in-person education. Hopefully, our numbers that we're hearing now will allow more in-person for at least grades K to four, since they're saying K to five, and I realize our breakdown is K to four. I would encourage looking at options for the middle school and being innovative in order to provide more in-person learning and programs for those students as well, because I think there's a real value in that interaction and that socialization. I know as a teacher, even when we went to more, um, texting and all of those things, we talk about the fact that the socialization isn't there as much because kids use that more. So the in-person is truly valuable, and our students are truly valuable. And I know our main goal as a board is the educational programs for our children in key, keeping in mind a safe environment as well, because that's important in this day and age. Hopefully with our 0% continues in our district, and we can look at that for our younger students. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Mr. Terry?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Um, I, a little bit of, echo a little bit of what, uh, Priscilla said. Looking forward to exploring ways to, uh, try to get back to, to, um, full-time instruction. And, and as I said in previous meeting, um, I look forward to working together to do that. So if there's any way that I, this board, anybody can be involved in, in, you know, brainstorm. Could be a brainstorming session, could be, could be anything at all. Um, let's, let's keep, uh, keep trying to bridge that gap a little bit. And, um, I think I had something else, but I don't remember, so we'll call it good. Um, agenda items for next meeting? Anybody got anything? No? If not, you can email, email them to Nicole, myself, Chris. Um, date of next board meeting, it says September 7th. Um, I think, is that, is that Labor Day? So, and then school starts the 8th. What do we wanna do, what are we gonna do with that? So, I know it's hard for everybody to hear, but.
I, I would suggest doing a week after. I think that principals and stuff have enough work to do, and I don't wanna hold them up for a, a meeting prior to the pressure, so.
So right now is the 17th, so that'll be one, two, three, four. It'll be four weeks. I don't know if we wanna go that long, do we?
That's a long time.
Do you wanna meet the? You wanna meet the 31st, and then? So just so everybody's, um, aware, we can't all talk at once and try to come up with something here. So I, so everybody else is muted, and Chris, if you, you have any thoughts on something that I relayed back, just go ahead and, and say so, okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so where are we at? I don't think we wanna bother them the first week, right? They're gonna be pretty busy. Well, first day, I don't think they're gonna have, be pretty. Oh, I'm looking in the wrong month. Are there any conflicts with the 14th or 15th, Chris, or any... Oh, it's the high school?
The, uh, on the calendar right now, the, the 14th, no, and the 15th, no.
No, so you're saying no to both of those days?
Um... No, I'm saying 15th would work, would work best, you could, that week, you could have, um, the 15th, I believe the high school's on the 14th, so that would leave the 15th, you guys could meet, or the 16th.
Everybody okay with the 14th? Uh, 15th, I'm sorry, 15th? And, and this, I'm, I wanna just put out there, you know, we, we, we got together here today to, to show that, you know, to do what we're asking our kids to do, um, it's, it's a little bit difficult, I mean, we'll talk about how we're gonna do it to go forward, but, um, you know, with the electronics and zooming it at the same time as being in person without, you know, fat TV or anything like that, um, it's pretty difficult, so we may have to have some, uh, sideline conversations about that, but, uh, in it, uh, at any rate, the, uh, next board meeting is set for September 15th... At 5:30. So, as, as long as nobody has anything else, we can call this meeting adjourned.